Eduardo, we ready?
Yeah, we're ready. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to introduce Andrew Miller, Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental Affairs at the Department of Youth and Community Development. Andrew, yours.
Yes, great. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Andrew Miller from DYCD. My preferred pronouns are he, him, is. On behalf of Commissioner Chung, welcome to the Interagency Coordinating Council on Youth Services Annual Public Hearing. This is the first time the hearing has been held remotely, so we thank you in advance for your patience for any glitches which may arise. So first, we're going to do a roll call about all the city agencies that have joined us today, and I got to call out the agency's name, and then they're going to be unmuted. Administration for Children's Services.
Ms. Jensen?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Rachel Jensen. I'm with ACS's Division of External Affairs. And as many of you know, ACS, or the Administration for Children's Services, is the agency that's responsible for the safety and well-being of New York City children and their families by providing child welfare, juvenile justice, primary prevention, and childcare services. We have continued all of these services through the pandemic and offering concrete supports for youth and families. And we're thrilled to be here today to listen to what everybody has to share.
Brooklyn Public Library?
Hey, I am Karen Keys. I am the Coordinator of Young Adult Services at Brooklyn Public Library.
Department of the Aging?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Helen Flowers. I'm the Director of the Grand County Resource Center at the New York City Department for the Aging. Looking forward to hearing from you all.
Department of Citywide Administrative Services?
Yeah, that's Mr. Terry Dentson. He is on the call. He was having some... There you go. Mr. Dentson, you're on. Just the audio, please. There you go.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Terry Dentson. I'm the Deputy Director for the Public Service Corps Program, a college internship program. We continue to place students virtually since we've been going through the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Corrections?
Ms. King, your audio.
I'm sorry. Good afternoon. I am Stacy King, the Executive Director for Education Services within the New York City Department of Correction.
Cultural Affairs?
Good afternoon. My name is Anthony Myers. I am an Arts Program Specialist with the Department of Cultural Affairs. We administer funds on behalf of the city to cultural programming, and a large percentage of that funding goes towards arts-related education for children and youth.
Department of Education?
Mr. Vaughn, I know you're on the call. Are you having any technical issues? Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. I see you're there. I can't hear you, though. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vaughn. We seem to be having some technical difficulties.
We did... But welcome. And I'll call on Department of Environmental Protection.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. My name is Lakeisha Bradshaw, and I'm an Education Coordinator within the DEP. And I'm happy to be here.
Department of Health and Mental Hygiene?
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi, I'm Abby Belikov from the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene.
Department of Parks and Recreation?
There you go. I know you're on the call.
Sorry, it muted itself. Erin Vega, Director of Citywide Youth Programs for Parks.
Department of probation?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shanae Brown, and I'm Program Manager with the New York City Department of probation.
Department of Social Services?
Okay, Mr. Paulino, I know you're on the call.
Okay, we could... I know he's here. Welcome. The Mayor's Office on Domestic and Gender-Based Violence?
Good afternoon. I'm Gabriel, a community educator for the New York City Healthy Relations Academy, which is housed under the Mayor's Office. It's a pleasure to be here.
The Awards Department?
Ms. Williams, the audio. Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Cecilia Williams. I'm the Director of Interagency and External Affairs in the Family Court Division of the New York City Law Department. We handle all of the matters involving interstate child support enforcement as well as juvenile delinquency cases for the five boroughs. And my pronouns are she and her, and I'm very happy to be here today.
New York Public Library?
Good afternoon. My name is Jordan Mangwell, and I'm the Young Adult Programming Coordinator. We're very excited to be here, and we currently serve Bronx Manhattan and Staten Island, both onsite and virtual programming.
FDNY?
Timothy Boyle? Yeah. I see Mr. Boyle on the call. I think we have some audio issues there.
Okay, welcome. Health and Hospitals? And I see that we have two representatives in Health and Hospitals. Welcome. NYCHA?
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Lauren Antwold. I am Borough Administrator for Brooklyn Family Partnerships Department. This is the Social Services Branch of the Housing Authority. I would be representing all boroughs of NYCHA, so glad to be here and welcome.
NYPD?
Hi, everyone. My name is Winston Wright. I'm a Sergeant in the New York City Police Department. The Lordly, the Community Affairs Bureau. We focus on implementation of different youth programs. Thank you.
Welcome. And Queens Public Library?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melissa Mallon. I'm the Coordinator of Teen Services for Queens Public Library. I'm very much looking forward to hearing the testimonials.
And finally, we are thrilled and pleased to be joined by the Youth Services Chair, Debbie Rose. Debbie, you want to say a few words? Welcome. Is unmute?
Oh, I think you're Councilmember Rose, your mute button? Oh, no.
I'm trying to unmute. Okay, there we go. Hi, hi, everybody. I'm so glad to see you all. I'm so thankful to my colleagues at DYCD and the esteemed ICC members and my colleagues in government. I want to thank all of you and the young people who are taking their time to be here and to speak to city government about their concerns. I have been... I have had the privilege of chairing the City Council's Committee on Youth Services for the last three years. I came to the City Council with a career not in politics, but in working with at-risk youth. So I'm no stranger to the real-life concerns and issues that we face every day. I became the Chair of the Youth Services Committee with the goal of expanding summer programs for young people, including Summer Sonic and Summer Youth Employment Programs, as well as expanding the necessary services for runaway and homeless youth. And for two years, we did just that. Never did I dream that in 2020 we would be fighting for the very existence of those very same programs. But that is exactly what happened when, in April, the mayor abruptly announced the cancellation of Summer Youth Employment Programs. We fought for this decision successfully, and with the help of our partners here at DYCD, the city launched Summer Bridge Programs and this year to connect young people with remote work experiences, something that was really new to us. And I have also spent much of this year focusing on learning labs for children of essential workers and other youth services. I know that the pandemic has had a disproportionate effect on young people, especially our young people from communities of color and lower socioeconomic backgrounds. I want you to know that I and my colleagues, all of my colleagues in the City Council, are committed to lifting up the most vulnerable of all of us and making sure that youth programming survives. And that is why we're here today. I'm really excited to hear your experiences, the needs and concerns, and without any more chatter from me. I'm glad to be here and I'm excited to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Welcome, Cheryl Rose. Always a pleasure. So this is the first ICC public hearing since the pandemic struck. We recognize the impact on all New Yorkers and, in particular, communities of color. Many tragically lost loved ones are out of work, had to learn remotely, and are feeling anxious about their future. The murder of George Floyd compounded the stress, while also ushering a powerful and meaningful modern, civil-day rights movement that black lives do matter. To help steer the city to recovery, the ICC has pushed the pedal to the metal in conducting business online. I'll just give you a few examples. For example, as part of Pride Month, the ICC held its annual LGBT Culture Policy Training. We thanked the center. I think this is our ninth time utilizing the center for this training. It's the 10th year that the ICC has been providing the training. During August, the ICC held a membership meeting to provide member support. We highlighted mental health resources available to young people for Thrive. Participants also had an opportunity to participate in a trauma-informed yoga workshop, which was terrific. On September 22nd, the ICC's Supporting LGBT Youth Work Group heard from Hedrick Martin Institute, who presented on their remote services for LGBT youth. On September 30th, the ICC's Court Involved Youth Work Group held a remote meeting featuring the topic of alternatives to incarceration. And we heard from the Red Hood Community Justice Center and the Center for Alternative Sentencing and Employment Services. On October 28th, the ICC was presented, and we're very proud of this, from the Administration of Children's Services with the LGBT Ally Award for Outstanding Community Advocate. So ACS, we really thank you for that recognition. In October, the ICC also devoted this meeting to the topic of domestic violence. We heard from the Mayor's Office to End Domestic Violence and Gender-Based Violence, who's with us today. They presented on the topic of domestic violence during the pandemic, which unfortunately has experienced an uptick in incidents. And then finally, on November 18th, the ICC Supporting LGBT Youth Work Group celebrated its 10th anniversary. We heard from DYCD's Runaway and Homeless Youth Program on its funded services for youth during the pandemic. And we participated in a recognition ceremony that featured a video tribute to the work over the years. These accomplishments would not have been possible without all the contributions from each and every one of you. And I'd also like to thank Deputy Mayor Phil Thompson, Commissioner Bill Chung, Randy Scott, Tracy Thorne, Paula Calby, Solynda Wu, Mohamed Al Shabani, our fabulous interns. He's from New York University, along with Alice Thompson, Breanna Rogers, and Nen She Wu from Fordham University, and of course, Eduardo LaVoy.
Thank you.
So before we begin the follow-up parts of the hearing, we want to encourage you to join DYCD next week on December 16th from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. for "We the Youth." It's going to be a youth-led, driven town hall series. Next week, you'll hear young people discuss how they experience inequality in education. So if you are or you know a young person 14 to 24 years old, the age, we encourage them to join in the conversation. And information about how to join that is in the chat box. In addition, at 5:30 today, the Campaign Finance Board actually wants to hear from you about your experiences about early voting or in-person voting on Election Day. So information about that is also in the chat, and it's also available on the Campaign Finance's website. And now we're going to begin the follow portion of our programming. Individually called and recorded that they registered, you will have three minutes to offer your testimony. Anyone else that would like to testify but have not registered can use the link available in the chat box to sign up during the proceedings. We just have a couple of ground rules. Only individuals testifying will be unmuted. Everyone else will be muted. And for those of you who are unable to join us today, we are accepting written testimony. Please email to icc@dycd.nyc.gov. And that will start calling people to testify. First, I'd like to call, and if I strip it, you know, I apologize. Nenya Guomo and Amelia Tino from Justice Ambassadors.
I think, Andrew, that's two individuals, so we have spoken Nenya and then Amelia?
Yes.
Hey, how's it going? Thanks so much for having me. My name is Nenya Guomo. I am the founder and president of Student Dream, which is a financial education nonprofit that trains pledge and high school students of color all across New York City to make more than enough money, college, and life through programs around financial literacy, investing, and entrepreneurship. And having worked and partnered with Beam and the Knowledge House this summer to be a work site for SYEP, I've really saw from a lot of our students that need and a desire for more financial education programming, especially during this time, both for students and parents with all the translate shapes. And so my question, are we going to really try to get more financial education services?
Andrew?
Yes.
I think we can't hear anymore. Nenya, the audio seems to be off on you. You posed a question about financial literacy? Yeah.
Well, I think DYCD's perspective, financial literacy is actually a very strong component of all of our workforce development programs, and in particular SYEP, which Cheryl Rose strongly supports. I don't know if there's other agencies that want to chime in? Okay.
Yeah, okay. Why don't you move on to the next speaker, which is Amelia Tino? Amelia?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Amelia Finael. I am a Justice Ambassador through Columbia University, and I am proposing the expansion of Project Reset through Bronx Community Solutions. So I just wanted to put into the context that there has been a rise in New York City unemployment, 13.2% over the October 2020, and there is an existence of 111 homeless students in 2019 to 2020 school year. So it is evident that the difficulties of COVID and the rising distrust of law enforcement leave gaping holes in our understanding of community safety and faith in local enforcement and our judicial system. So in order to remedy the paralleling impacts of COVID and this mass attention, it is in the full responsibilities of judicial powers, social workers, and law enforcement as first responders to community public safety to be responsive to these restorative justice initiatives. And this is why I invite everyone to look at a lot of the work that's been done with pre-trial school restorative justice initiatives in the Bronx. And a lot of this work to acknowledge and restore Indigenous definitions of safety in the scope of sentencing and penal justice. So for that reason, I would like to bring attention to expanding Project Reset in the Bronx, extending it beyond the initiative of best appearance tickets and funding and employing mentees and organizations from the Bronx as consultants and experts on building communal trust for our local judicial system.
Thank you for that. Now we have Ms. Blackpeace? Another Justice Ambassador? They're not on the phone.
Okay, you may want to move on to the next one, Andrew, and then come back if anything.
We have Vivian Wang from the New York Civil Liberties Union, Teen Activist Project.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. First off, I would like to start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to testify this hearing today. My name is Vivian, and I'm a youth organizer from the New York Civil Liberties Union's Teen Activist Project. I am here today to discuss two important topics: mental health and police in schools. So when I was 14 years old, I sat down one-on-one for the very first time in an enclosed room with a Level 3 detective. And at that time, I was unfortunately still naive to the amount of violent stalkers and the event of interactions between officers and commoners. So I sat down to talk with her, and at first, it seemed all right. And even though I had felt unsettled that night, I didn't know why, but then at one point, after I sat there in silence, remembering my right to remain silent, she turns to me and she tells me that she's a detective and she carries a gun. The only reason she wasn't at that very moment was because she was talking to me. And so for the first time, I understood the fear of an officer. I understood that even though police officers vow to serve our communities, they can take advantage of their position and power. And ever since that day, every time I walked on the streets, in school, at court, or anywhere else, I felt afraid. I was scared, and I was paranoid, especially if an officer carried a gun. Safety does not mean police officers asserting their dominance. It doesn't mean a wet-based subject due to fear. Safety does not mean the abuse of power. Safety means you have the right to feel protected, to feel equal, to feel like you are worthy. And this is exactly what happens, not just on the streets, but also inside schools. Data from the ACLU has shown that 47 states and Washington, D.C. do not meet the recommended students-to-counsel ratio. With police in schools, many of the school's disciplinary actions revolve around the arrest of students, which caused 31% of black students to be arrested. Students of colors and students with disabilities also represent a large percentage. Our criminal justice system focuses on punishment rather than helping people realize what they did wrong or help them to get better. Additionally, without emotional support, how are we expecting our students to achieve above and beyond? Especially now, more than ever, during times of COVID-19, we need to create a larger platform in making sure that every student, regardless of who they are and where they come from, has equal access to a qualified mental health professional. Instead of having police officers in schools, we should have more mental health professionals, guidance counselors, social workers, and nurses. We need professionals who are patient, who are able to de-escalate situations without using violence, who are able to talk to us and understand how we feel. The best place to start will be by taking school resource officers out of schools and mentoring in social workers and guidance counselors so we can reduce the trauma and fear that students experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Eduardo Anderson, Nenya's back?
Yes, Nenya, please finish your testimony.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Not sure. I guess we're a financial education nonprofit that helps students of color make more college and life, financial literacy, testing programs, and entrepreneurship programming. And I wanted to know what is being done or brought to the table when it comes to helping more students and families be financially, not just survive, but really during and after the pandemic. Because one of the students, you know, their most precious don't always have that time to teach it to students themselves. So I really wanted to... That's on the forefront and together to get more parents and students prepared.
All right. I don't know, Andrew, if she heard your initial response when she testified initially?
Yeah, obviously, financial literacy is at the forefront of a lot of our workforce development programs, in particular SYEP. And certainly, I'll certainly take back your powerful testimony back to the agency's leadership about how we can weave in...
Okay. Yeah, our apologies. We are experiencing some technical difficulties. Are you able to hear me? Yeah, okay. Mohamed, I'm going to ask you to please read the name of the next individual that is scheduled to testify. Could you please make that announcement so that person could join us and share their testimony?
Sure. Next, we have William French from West End Secondary School.
William, I know you were here earlier with us. Are you here now? Yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just couldn't move myself. All right. Can you all see me?
Yeah, we can see you. We can hear you, William. Yes.
All right, awesome. All right, so my name is William French. My pronouns are he/him, and I'm an 11th grader at West End Secondary School. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak today as well. I'm testifying because I'm concerned that our generation is being called a lost generation of students as a result of the pandemic and switch to remote learning. I'm most concerned about the educational inequities in our city schools that have gotten worse during the pandemic. I do want to recognize that they've always been there, but it's just the gap has been widened since the pandemic and that students who are black, Latinx, diagnosed with disabilities, learning English, or who come from low-income families are at risk of falling behind the most. So I just want to ask, I would like to know what the city and DOE are doing to help these students and how students like me can get involved to support those students.
Great, great. Thank you, William, for that testimony. Would any of the representatives from the Department of Education like to respond? Okay, what we're going to do, and I want to share with everybody, and again, I do apologize for the technical difficulties that we are experiencing. We will be... This call is being... We will be, this call is being recorded, it is going to be posted. Our our goal is to get each of the member agencies that are in hand to hear this testimony. Uh we will be providing excerpts of the testimony specifically to the agencies that are being highlighted for their appreciation and response. I I know um if anybody would like to uh get uh some additional information after the hearing. Uh just let me know in the chat box and we'll make sure that you I get that testimony delivered to you. In the meantime, it will be posted in the DYCD webpage immediately after this. So uh again, thank you for bearing with us as we experience some technical difficulties. Our host, our emcee for the meeting, has unfortunately uh been knocked out, so I'm gonna ask Mohammed to uh please uh. That will be testifying today.
Uh next we have Joshua Pacheco from Red Hook uh Community Justice Centers.
Joshua, I saw you on the call, yes.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we could hear you, Joshua.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be speaking to you all. I appreciate, you know, the time. And Eduardo, as always, for having uh the Red Hook Justice Center involved in the ICC meetings. I think it's been.
Yes.
A little less than a year now that we've been uh interacting and being part of the meetings. Um I have actually had the pleasure of having you guys come to the Justice Center at one point and. At the same time of presenting to my fellow members in the ICC. Um I'm here today to talk about a little bit what we do at the Justice Center. So I'm the person in charge of running our community uh programs at the Justice Center. Um and one of the programs I run is a youth court of now known as Youth Impact. I know most people on this call will probably recognize it as Youth Court. Um and we run a bunch of, you know, community initiative programs, whether it's dealing with the police, um handling courts, working with uh Department of Probation, the Law Department to handle. Actual cases. We are big on transformative and restorative justice policies. Um one big push that we have been doing prior to the murder of George Floyd has been a bridging the gap with police. Um this program has been monumental to connecting young people, especially disenfranchised young people and the officers that patrol and work in their communities. Um we have kind of, since the murder of George Floyd, we've become a much more civic organization and my young people have, you know, expressed. Interest in running for public office like myself one day. And they have tasked me with the question of what can they do as a young person to get involved in various institutions? And become civically engaged with this city. I know that there is uh a handful of representatives from various agencies throughout New York City. And if there is any uh room of for collaboration, I would love to work with you all and see how we can get young people at the forefront of things. That are affecting them like some speakers have mentioned before. I know a lot of the younger people have already mentioned disparity in local schools. Especially in communities of color, the disparities of the effects of covid. These are things that our young people are very interested in tackling. And I I know one person also mentioned the entrepreneurship program, which is another thing that we've done in the past, but we want to expand. And with the help of agencies, we hope that we have the possibility of doing this.
Yes, uh tha- thank you so much for that, uh Mr. Pacheco. Yes, it's a pleasure to hear from you. Uh yes, it was wonderful visiting the Red Hook Justice Center. A little difficult to get there by bus, couldn't walk it. I tried to walk out of there, by the way. I got zigged and zagged, but I made it.
I should have gave you a warning.
Yes, uh yes, I I must imagine, uh Mr. Pacheco, that you're absolutely right. Young people are looking for civic engagement opportunities. Uh there are some out there that currently exist. I will certainly share that with our ICC members for their appreciation. And uh the information that I get, I will certainly post. I will tell you that the Department of Youth and Community Development has a wonderful neighborhood development program. Uh and they actually have neighborhood advisories. Well, the best thing about the neighborhood advisory boards is that young people can now join them. They lowered the membership age to eighteen, which a lot of young people could join. And what's important about the NDAs, the NDAs distribute funding dollars in the communities. And they utilize the recommendations by the community NDA boards to um allocate those fundings. So oftentimes, we have um different populations that are the ones who tend to sit on these boards. So if a community has uh seniors on those boards, chances are they're gonna recommend that those allocations go to senior programs. Now that there's an opportunity for young people as young as eighteen to join those boards, they can certainly highlight what the needs of the community are. So I will tell you right off the bat that we are looking for young people to join these boards. Um out of the uh, I believe we have fifty nine New York City community boards. Uh forty four of them are designated as neighborhood development areas and that'll be an opportunity. We are always looking. Uh for people to populate those boards and I would love to have that conversation with you as how we could promote that. Uh this is a great civic engagement opportunity, but more importantly, an ability to recommend how these funding allocations should be dispersed. So we'll certainly talk about that and we will certainly look to highlight what our other partners in government are doing to allow young people to engage civically. Thank you. Yes, yeah, uh Mohammed, can you uh please um identify the next uh individual that's here to testify?
Uh next we have uh Tyler Campbell from uh the Justice Ambassadors Program.
Hey, everybody, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we could hear you, Tyler.
So thank you so much. Um good afternoon. My name is Tyler Campbell. I am the lead instructor for the Justice Ambassador's Youth Council sponsored by Columbia University. What I want to talk to you all today about is uh youth incarceration in our city and my proposed solution. So to establish the gravity of the problem, since two thousand one, right, youth incarceration rates have actually fallen in New York City, which is very good. But the disparity between incarcerated black youth and white youth is on the ground. So to put it simply, you know, black youth can actually commit the same exact crimes as white youth, but the vast majority of the time, black youth are the ones who are being incarcerated. I want to create a more trauma-informed criminal justice system with the goal of keeping youth out of color, out of prisons. And giving them the support they need to thrive within their own communities and homes. So my policy proposal idea, which is kind of to help fix this problem, I want to create a special juvenile diversion program that will require every youth who enters the criminal justice system to automatically receive. Should they want to, a comprehensive uh social assessment that would not only focus on their criminal behavior. Will also examine the youth's entire life history, including their family history, their history of caregivers, exposure to trauma, instability, educational history, like are they still in school? What are their grades looking like? Are they attruant? And also social history. Um when a child would enter this program, you know, I would ideally like a specialist to measure each child's stress and behavioral needs. Ace coordinators could use this evaluation to develop a customized program for each youth with wraparound services designed to help each child achieve success and avoid new criminal offenses. Because that's the overall goal, right? And so these services in my mind, because it looks something like, you know, individual therapy. Mentoring, access to tutoring if they're doing bad in school or just not attending, mental health treatment, because a lot of times students have mental health issues that are underlying. Um school support and then connection to recreational activities, because a lot of times kids don't, you know, aren't involved in anything after school and that's one of the huge problems. To have them outside, you know, getting into trouble they shouldn't be into. Um we use a trauma-informant to examine these issues. It changes the conversation from what's wrong with you to what's happened to you. And we know that hurt people hurt people, and so I think we shouldn't be spending our money and resources arresting and incarcerating our city's youth, you know, for years to come. But instead trying to create this program so we're not re-traumatizing them, but you know, allowing them to heal from the hurt that they've experienced. And so this proposal is technically speaking aimed at um DA's office and the NYPD as a collaboration. To kind of divert funding from NYPD and then establish a way for which youth can opt into this program as a way and alternate programs to incarceration. And I know some of you might be wondering if this is plausible or even realistic, but similar program actually exists already in Washington DC, which is of course a major city. That has existed now for about five years and they have all the statistics and numbers around how it has actually dropped incarceration rates. And youth who go through this program actually do not offend at a rate, I think seventy eight percent of the youth who go through this program never offend again in terms of incarceration or actually committing any crimes. So I think, you know, it's time for us to try to look at, you know, trying to commit something like this and um. That's all I have for you today. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it.
Yes, uh thank you for that testimony, uh Mr. Campbell. We really value the work that you're doing at the Columbia Justice Center. Uh it is amazing. I know that the best people to speak about uh the issues are people that are directly impacted by the system. And uh we've uh come to appreciate that in in greater fold right now and we certainly look forward to continuing the dialogue with you. I know I recently met you. And I'm excited about those possibilities. Uh the CFDO has a lot of resources, we know that. Uh what we need to do is better fine tune those resources to the needs of the community. And of course, what better way than to have that dialogue to learn as to how we could uh do this. Uh too often, we have uh providers and professionals that mean the best. However, they may not be talking to the populations they need to serve, so we will certainly look to uh make those connections and that's what we try to do here in the ICC. So this conversation, uh Mr. Campbell, I look forward to continuing with you. Thank you so much. At this point, I'd like to um have Mr. David Chiang join us. Uh David is an assistant district attorney. Uh and uh is involved with Community Partnership for Youth Development Bureau. Uh David, are you with us?
I am, how are you?
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, I'm section chief for Community Partnerships and it's currently the acting director of the Youth Empowerment Bureau here. That we've been trying to do a lot of what uh many of the uh test- testifiers have been talking about. We have some great youth program right now. Uh first, we have a program called Pathways to Knowledge, which is where we actually send uh ADAs and staff to go into the schools. Um and reach young people before they make that decision. Um and teach them about the legal system, why rules and laws are important, uh try to instill a sense of social responsibility. Um so that people feel that rather than trying to deter someone from committing crime, the idea is to say, teach someone that they don't. So that they don't even have that what desire to commit the crime. Um and that's really a different approach that needs to be taken and that's one of the things that we've been trying to do. Uh we also have a student advisory council where we have uh young people from high schools all over Queens that come into. Uh the office, well, they usually come into the office, but virtually, we've been meeting with them virtually. Um and we've been talk discussing issues such as uh deterrence, uh punishment and reform. Uh we're gonna be talking about climate change and how the laws should be uh, you know, to potential solutions and. To the problems as opposed to just simply uh put here in echo chamber. One of the most important things, we want to have people. Hear both sides of all the issues and discuss them fairly. Um then we also have a legal explorers program right now, which is uh we have almost a hundred youths uh that come in and uh virtually right now. But uh they are listening to people uh. ADAs, defense attorneys, uh judges, police officers, uh we're gonna have. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to get some of the people from the medical examiner's office to come in and tell them a little bit more and crime scene investigators. That they can learn more about how the criminal criminal justice system really works. Uh and in fact, we're doing a sample case that we're they're they're looking uh at listening to sample nine one one calls. Uh and the radio runs to understand how a case comes together. They're gonna all take part, take part in uh the decision-making process uh on both sides. Uh both pretending to be the defendant or the prosecutor's office and even the judge and jury later on as we go through a trial. That's really one of the things that we've been doing and we're trying to also create uh programming. Uh to reach out to the most at-risk youth uh and try and figure out how to reach them. And again, knowing that many of the young youths are at the cusp or have already started to go down the wrong path. How do we guide them the right way uh so they they make better decisions for the future? Um so much of what I've heard, you know, you know, a lot of things come from uh the inequality or of opportunity. Sometimes it's the financial issues that uh beat a young person down the wrong path. Uh and a lot of times it's a misinformation that they're getting. They believe that, you know, perhaps that uh you they can make a lot of money doing something that's illegal. But if you actually compare it to someone who's doing legal work, it's not that much. Um when you go by the hour and, you know, things like that, but they often, you know, young people unfortunately are. Uh really drawn to sometimes the media representation of this criminal activity and we're trying to kind of correct that. But thank you so much for having me here. Um I'd like to do know the district attorney's office in Queens is working hard to reach young people. Um and we've been doing it for many years. Uh we're trying to increase what we're doing and uh we have a specific bureau board now. Um and we we're already reaching uh oh about two hundred fifty young people uh already.
Thank you, David, for that uh testimony. Uh David, I know you reached out to me electronically during the course of this uh call right now and I thank you for that. But I must warn you, now you gave me your contact information, so now I have it and I can assure you, I will be calling upon you. Uh this is an opportunity to learn what you're doing, however, we want to appreciate that a little bit more in depth. And how we could refer, recommend and uh bring our our big cities closer together, because obviously we're doing some outstanding things and. Uh oftentimes we hear about them, but we want to learn more, so I will be reaching out to you. Hopefully you'll be available as soon as uh January, February. And we uh get to uh have you join us to uh share more of your wonderful work, okay? Great, um I see uh we have in the call a friend of the ICC, uh Kevin Keros. Kevin, are you with us today? Kevin? Kevin uh Keros is a wonderful young man who's uh previously joined us and testified. He is uh currently the number one strong man in the state of New York. And uh he's done some amazing work, which just involves youth. Uh Kevin, I see that you're on the call. Would you like to uh share with us your perspective tonight?
Uh hi, um.
Uh I'm sorry, we're having a you're coming in and out, Kevin. I had you there for a moment. Um. Yeah, okay, there we go.
All right.
Yeah, we we can hear you a little bit shaky, comes in and out. When I give it a try. I know that uh Kevin has offered some wonderful testimony on how we could work with quite a lot of young people. And uh Kevin, as I mentioned, is the strongest man in New York through competition. And I I like to point that out because when we're talking about young people, uh young people are used to dealing with a lot of us, which I hate to say it, they look up us upon us as bureaucrats. That may or may not get it, but when somebody as imposing as uh Kevin Keros comes into the room. Uh which is the strongest man in New York and he looks the part, uh he gets their attention. So Kevin, I know you're having a little difficulty. Uh have you been able to unmute yourself there? Uh your your mute button, Kevin. There you go.
Okay. Yes. Okay. For example, the. I think the wonderful. For joining me, taking the time, I know that uh you're dealing with this virtual reality. Time to be there, but uh. I mean, I have this uh. Uh the. Um absolutely. But you. Very long. I. Please. vertical. I mean, I see that it kind of fight. A little bit. Uh you know. School. Why is. It's. Really do follow up on it. Um I think some. I kind of take away is. Station about financial literacy. That was uh a whole. Uh topic um that. As a whole name, they're. Uh. My thought. System. Joining you through. I have. And I. Sure. That we be. As so. Uh to for it's important, I thought that that was it. Definitely. So uh I think. Now it's. Um I also. Um. About um. And like being like this. I know that I like people a lot of. Lot of. This part of community where I live at and actually. Organize. Uh um. So I believe they. Um work. Completely. Thank you. Uh. Who. Uh you know, respected community. Oh, I. Each one thing. Who that. Okay. I'm biggest thing uh uh. We from hopefully that's for many decades now. Yeah, Eduardo, thank you so much, uh.
Yes.
Title. Thought everybody was taking the time and thank.
That thank you for that, Kevin. It's always wonderful to have you join us. Uh yes, not only is uh Kevin the strongest man in New York, but he recently got married to the strongest woman in New York. Uh Kevin, um I wish you were my neighbor, uh because I know I have a rock to lean on. And between you and me, they're just amazing that you're both in athletic competition like that and have reached the heights of that type of. I know it requires a lot of training and I know you do a lot of good work in the community, so thank you, thank you for that. Um appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, uh Mohammed, uh can you please call on the next individual that is set to testify, please?
Uh sure, next we have uh Tristan Blake.
Is Tristan Blake with us? Yes. Hi.
Um my name is uh Tristan Blake. I am a um another youth ambassador from Columbia University and I. and I am also a volunteer director of a youth-led nonprofit. And by youth-led, I mean like we're all youth. I'm only twenty-two, and everyone else on the team is either younger or up to twenty-four. And the issue that I wanted to bring up is that during this pandemic, we have seen that people right here in our communities have the bold ideas and lived experience to change communities for the better. We've seen that with the upsurge in mutual aid, like from big to small functionalities that have helped to provide water in Red Hook to food, similar to DIFT's Get Food. And I just wanted to say that I think sometimes the city has maybe risk aversion, which you can see is most prominent when it comes to leaders of color and even colorblind policies when having to do philanthropy. And I would say that's even more exacerbated when coming to talk about youth solutions. And I just wanted to say that as a organization that supports micro grants for youth leaders in the community, we are looking for more funding, more opportunities to get more mentors for our students and also link up with other community boards and elected officials to learn how we can expand. We, as I mentioned, are already in talks with the Center for Justice, but we want to also see how we can liaise with city government and to make more further like paid youth opportunities for them to have project management skills, leadership skills, things of that nature.
Yes. Thank you for that testimony, Tiara. I really value the work that's going on with the youth ambassadors, justice ambassadors at Columbia Justice. I had the opportunity to have them visit with us and they just had some amazing recommendations. Now, I know annually, some recommendations are developed that they'd like to share with city-based government agencies. I'll be more than happy to give them those recommendations and more importantly, vote them to the right agencies that can also appreciate that. And in terms of opportunities, I want to share with you that employment program have priority placement for vulnerable youth. So we could certainly talk about promoting those initiatives like that, and like you said, possible partnership opportunities. So we'd love to continue the conversation. I know Tyler was on a little earlier offering testimony. And let's just make it a point to continue the dialogue. I already signed up, David, joined January, February, and I'm gonna reach out to the Columbia Justice Center for that purpose. We, that's and that's what we hope to do. Thank you so much for your testimony. Yes, I see that we got our host back. Mr. Miller, are you with us? The audio? The audio needs to be activated, Andrew. Okay, I see your I should say, but for some reason, your audio is still cut off. So you get that together? Oh, there you go. Yeah, you're back. Yes.
My apologies to everyone. My Wi-Fi went down for ten minutes.
Okay. Right along, Andrew. So to catch up with us is Mohammed is going to introduce the next testifier, and then you'll take over those duties. Mohammed, please, can you identify the next individual that's here with us to testify?
Next, we have Chris Kobar from Red Hook Community Justice Center.
Hi, how are you? My name's Chris Kobar. I work with AmeriCorps, specifically the Community Justice Center. I work with Josh and Youth and Community Programs. First off, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to speak about my experience in youth community with Youth Impact. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate my time there. I think it was very eye-opening and very engaging to learn that, you know, youth courts, you know, really train teenagers, you know, to handle real-life cases. And it involves, you know, youth, and it offers a restorative response to their misbehavior. Because I think in order for people to not, in order for youth to not get into the system, I think it's great that we use positive peer pressure, you know, to ensure that young people who have committed minor offenses pay back to the community and that they receive that help that they need to avoid further, you know, involvement in the system. And I think you're doing, being in that experience is really eye-opening and makes me realize that there's a lot of things that need to be corrected in the justice, in the justice system and everything in general. And I think it's great, and I'm learning a lot being in an ICC meeting for the first time. So thank you for having me and looking forward to learning more to about, you know, ways and solutions to help.
Thank you.
Well, welcome. Great. Thank you for that great testimony. I'm sure Eduardo will be wanting to get any more involved in that work group.
Yes, for sure.
Next up, we have Catherine Ortiz, also from Red Hook Community Justice Center.
Catherine, are you with us? Yeah, we might be having a
I don't think she's here.
Okay.
Next up, we have Cornelius Wiggins from the LGBT Center.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Cornelius.
Okay. Hi, so my name is Cornelius, and I am from the LGBT Center in Manhattan. And today I just want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing since COVID hit, but also about our young people and some of the stuff that they have been going through. So the LGBT Center Youth Program has seen a large increase in crisis since COVID nineteen began. Many of our young people have experienced some type of loss since, because of COVID, loss of loved ones, loss of housing, income, food, securities. These losses have led to other disparities, including homelessness, lack of resources, and mental health emergencies. All of these things can lead to isolation and increase in substance misuse. That's why it is so important for us to continue to reach out and check in with our young people. Since COVID started, we, back in March, we went to virtually online, and we started doing all of our programming online. So we are open Monday through Friday online for LGBTQ youth ages thirteen to twenty-one. We offer daily groups and other activities during weekday afternoons. We have prevention counseling, case managing, resource support and education, job readiness training and other services, including paid internship, interim programs, and incentivized prevention groups online. We also have our Youth Recovery Program is still operating and taking new intakes. We take clients between the ages of thirteen to twenty-five. We offer weekly individual counseling, psychiatrist care, medication management, incentivized daily recovery groups, access to case managing and other support services. We are also offering counseling services for young people and caregivers who are not using but are directly impacted by substance use by caregivers, children, family members, or significant others. No one is turned away because their inability to pay or if they don't have insurance. The center recognizes that now, more than ever, LGBT youth are in need of community support and resources, and we are dedicated to providing safe access to young people thus navigating the challenges that they are facing, including the ones that are compounded by the pandemic, through a range of affirming services and resources that we are offering. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your powerful testimony. We really appreciate the services that the center is doing to help young people get through the COVID nineteen pandemic. They've been strong partners, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, both with the ICC and DYCD and offering youth services. So again, we thank you for your testimony and for testifying today. Next, we'll introduce Catherine Ortiz. I think she's available now.
Oh, sorry, that's Mackenzie Turgen.
Okay.
From Justice Ambassadors Youth Council.
Oh, Mackenzie. Okay.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for having us today. Yeah, I guess I'll just take a few minutes to talk about something I've been working on in class, which has to do with teacher certification for people who are formerly incarcerated. And so a classmate of mine was going through the process, attending teachers' college, getting his master's to become a public school teacher to serve his community, and then got to the point of certification and was automatically denied. And then, once he requested a hearing, went through that hearing and then was denied again. And yeah, so I guess we've just, we've been thinking about how we can make that process more equitable for people who have served their time, I guess, as long as their crimes have nothing to do with minors, which kids didn't. It seems like there's not really a reason why they shouldn't be able to serve their communities, especially if they're qualified and have been going through the process of getting a master's degree. And so, yeah, just sort of going with like the ban the box movement, just being more cognizant, I guess, in the hearing process, maybe granting conditional clearance and then seeing like, as long as there's no more justice involvement for a certain period, then they should be able to be, to teach in schools. I think it's important for students, especially in New York City. We see the public school system is pretty segregated, and there are more students of color in public schools than ever before, and a lot of their teachers don't look like them. But even more than just having racially matched teachers, having teachers that know your background and can make school relevant to your experiences is really important. And so people who come from these communities, who may have made poor decisions but then served their time, you know, should have the chance to give back and help students make better decisions in the future, for future generations. And so, yeah, that's just something that I wanted to share with you all.
Absolutely. Thank you. Eduardo, now it's four oh six. I know there was a second group of young people, few young people that were going to testify. Are they present?
Yes, they are. That's the New York Civil Liberties Union. So please go to number eleven on that list.
Sure. Sage Prusak. Prusak?
Hi, yes. That's me.
Welcome.
I'm just starting my video. Oh, Orna. Oh, there we go. Hello. So, good afternoon. I'm Sage, as you know. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm an eleventh grader and a youth organizer from the New York Civil Liberties Union Teen Activist Project. And thank you guys for hearing me today. When I was thirteen, I was hospitalized in a psychiatric unit for ten days. It was very cold, although fall was only beginning, everyone was wearing a sweater. It was even colder at night. So needless to say, me and other patients would ask for as many of the thin towel-like blankets that the hospital offered. At least there were structure in our days. There was school to attend at the hospital and a handful of periodic group therapy sessions. But when I was using unhealthy coping strategies, they threatened to take away all of my blankets. Post-COVID, my experience in an inpatient hospitalization was very different. This time, there was no structure, inconsistent group therapy, and very few individual therapy sessions in my ten days there. And after all of this, I still don't blame the hospitals. Instead, I blame the systematic issues that make all of these stories a reality, which is lack of funding. Lack of funding for various mental health support routines has drastic and huge impacts. In twenty seventeen, there were over six thousand two hundred suicide deaths among adolescents and young adults ages fifteen to twenty-four, making it the second-leading cause of death for that age group in the United States. I cannot count the number of times in these last three years that I've heard from a therapist or counselor, "We want you to reach out for help before the situation becomes a crisis." But a situation becoming a crisis can happen in such an instant that most people don't realize. Lack of funding also prevents people from accessing their services that they need. While I have a stable income that can pay for my therapist because I can afford to, I'm also aware that others who are less privileged may have difficulties with receiving mental health services. There needs to be more funds allocated for counselors in schools, for social workers in schools, for therapists and psychologists. I'm scared for the future of youth if we keep putting priorities elsewhere. I ask, please make our lives a priority in your funding because mental health resources often become students' lifelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Sage, for your moving testimony, talking about your personal experience and the need for more robust mental health services for young people. Thank you. And then we have Jeanette Oriana.
It's Oriana, but okay. Okay, so. Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jeanette Oriana, and I'm a youth organizer from the New York Civil Liberties Teen Activist Project. Today, I will be speaking about comprehensive sexuality education. Students attending New York public schools have been severely impacted by the lack of comprehensive, inclusive, and age-appropriate sex education. Unfortunately, it is not a requirement for New York public schools to teach sex, to teach sex education. As a result, students are left uneducated, ill-equipped to keep themselves safe and healthy. The schools that do teach sex education often spread incorrect, outdated, and stereotypical and stigmatizing information that can scathe students instead of educating them. In New York, teen pregnancy rate is higher than the national average, coupled with the highest teen abortion rate in the country. Individuals ages fifteen through nineteen represent more than fifty percent of new STI cases in New York State. A twenty seventeen survey found that fifty percent of New York high school students have engaged in sexual intercourse, and only eleven percent used pregnancy or STI prevention method. These reports found by the NYCLU are proof that comprehensive sex ed should be mandated in New York, since it would prepare young people to have safe sex, prevent sexually transmitted infections, and unwanted pregnancies. New York City also has some of the highest rates of intimate partner violence in the country. Comprehensive sex ed will help students develop healthy relationships, identify toxic or abusive behavior, prevent violence within relationships, and make responsible decisions. Sex education in New York public schools also needs to be inclusive and age-appropriate. The LGBTQ plus community is underrepresented, and if the curriculum included the LGBTQ plus community, it would help students understand sexual orientation, gender identity, and acceptance better. According to GLSEN's most recent nationwide school survey, oh, sorry, forty-four point six percent of LGBTQ plus students feel unsafe at school because of their gender expression. A twenty fifteen National Center of Transgender Equity Survey found that seventy-seven percent of students who were out or perceived as transgender at some point between K through twelve experienced being verbally harassed, prohibited from dressing according to their gender identity, disciplined more harshly, and physically or sexually assaulted at school. This is unacceptable. Students shouldn't be treated like this in an environment that is supposed to be safe for them to learn and grow. California, Chicago, and Washington DC have already mandated comprehensive sex ed from K to twelve, unlike New York, who has only mandated the teaching of HIV and AIDS in schools. Young people with disabilities have also received little to no former sex health education at school. Many teachers and school staff mistakenly believe that young people with disabilities don't need sex education, excluding them from the sex ed curriculum. Sex education being age-appropriate is another important aspect. Children in elementary school won't be learning about sexual intercourse, but instead, they will learn about healthy friendships, communication, consent, and personal hygiene. Both experts and researchers support children learning age-appropriate sex ed at a young age to be well-informed as they grow up. Many parents supporting, many parents support mandating comprehensive sex ed in New York as well. A twenty seventeen, a twenty seventeen report taken by the NYCLU show that ninety-six percent of surveyed parents think it's important to have sex ed in high schools, and ninety-three point five thought it was to have these curriculums in middle schools. Mandating comprehensive, inclusive, and age-appropriate sex education will benefit young people because they will have a better understanding of themselves and others. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to testify on this issue.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry for screwing up your last name, but we really appreciate your testimony, and clearly you did your research and you know your stuff. So thank you. Next up, we have Jack Lehman.
Andrew.
Yes.
Just, hi, this is Gabriel from NGBV. I just want to comment on what Jeanette said. Jeanette, I hear you at the mayor's office to end domestic and gender-based violence. Jeanette, I hear you at the mayor's office to end domestic gender-based violence. We do have a consent workshop that we do for high school age students. It would be great to connect with your activist group to maybe do that workshop with you all, because you talked about harm reduction, healthy behaviors, noticing unhealthy behaviors, and we do that work. So it would be great to connect with your group. I will put our content information in the chat. You can have it, but I will be looking for your email if that's something you really want to partner up with.
For sure. I would love to do that.
Thank you, Gabriel. And back to Jack Lehman.
Okay, I was muted there for a second. You guys can hear me all right, right?
Yes.
Cool, cool, cool. Okay, so, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jack Lehman, as you guys know, and I am a youth leader from the New York Civil Liberties Union's Teen Activist Project. I hope today has been going well for all of you. Even if it hasn't, hopefully you have someone or something in your life that you know will make things better. Unfortunately, as it seems to be today, this is not the case for many people. At my age, bullying may be one of the causes that brings teens down, and the effects are damaging to their self-esteem. I'm sure some of you have experienced bullying sometime in your life, and you remember how it made you feel. For those my age, it may be a bully who gets us down. However, what becomes dangerous over time are the platforms by which these bullies can affect us. Our phones and computers now are an outlet for abuse. Bullies now often have a shield behind them, in which they speak out insults without censorship or intervention. Even without the bullies, the so-called social media that billions of people across the world use has caused a generation of people separated, polarized, and overstimulated by their devices. The statistics show that a society fueled by social media is not a happy one. Numerous studies show that higher cell phone usage is directly linked to symptoms of mental illness, such as anxiety and depression. In recent years, we have seen a suicide rate spike amongst our country's population. Among those suffering, women in the LGBTQ population have been most severely impacted. We, as the American people, all want a better life for ourselves and those around us, and many times, it's not easy to feel happy. The truth is, there has always been a stigma against mental illness in our society, and it's something that's made its way into our schools and our government. For instance, the American School Counselors Association recommends at least one counselor for every two hundred and fifty students in school. The national average, however, is four hundred and forty-four students per counselor. In fact, only three states, Vermont, New Hampshire, and Montana, are meeting the recommendations, and by small margins of that. Here in New York in two thousand seventeen, the city reported that there are only two thousand eight hundred and eighty guidance counselors serving the city's one million students, or about one counselor for every three hundred and forty-eight students. But there are only half as many social workers employed by the city, suggesting that each one is working with an average of more than seven hundred students. In America alone, more than nineteen million of our children are enrolled in schools as therapists. Nineteen million. That's more than a quarter of school-aged kids without a reliable adult to talk to and helps with having better control of their life and their future. However, mental health isn't limited to a certain demographic. As Americans, we are guaranteed the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, but we shall not forget the pivotal role that our own mental health plays in maintaining these things. It's not an issue of just a few. It's a concern of our nation, constitution, and the greater good of humanity. We are asking that you do more to ensure that every young person in New York City schools has access to guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, and nurses. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Your thoughtful testimony. I think I recall you testifying last year, right?
Great, welcome back.
Next up, we have Benjamin Boateng. Boateng.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Benjamin Boateng, and I'm a youth organizer from the New York Civil Liberties Union Teen Activist Project. I hope everyone is having a good day today. I will be speaking about suspensions in the school-to-prison pipeline. It was supposed to be a safe haven, a place where children go to learn and grow up as individuals. However, suspensions, police officers, surveillance, and other display measures make it so that it's not the case for students of color and those with disabilities. One time, on my way to get lunch, I was stopped by police officers. I wasn't the only student there at the train station, but I was the only student of color. They stopped me and questioned me for about five minutes over nothing. I missed out on part of my lunch to be questioned. From that day on, I made sure to never take the train alone for lunch. Made my anxiety so much worse. The worst thing about the interruption, the worst thing about that interruption is that for months, I felt like they'd gone out of school. No student should ever have to go through that. I shouldn't have went through that. Suspensions in schools are not a form of punitive measure. Suspensions disproportionately target students with disabilities. When students are suspended, they lose out on a quality of education. Time is lost in the classroom equals motivation lost because a student feels as if the school does not want or care about them. In addition, there is a lack of services for students with disabilities and students experiencing homelessness, hunger, and poverty. These various factors outside of school often manifest themselves as disruptive behavior in the classroom. Black students in grades K through twelve are one point nine times more likely to be expelled, two point three times more likely to be disciplined through involvement of officers such as related arrests. Young women of color are five point five times more likely to be suspended from school than their white peers. Black girls are often punished for challenging what society considers feminine behavior. Disproportionately targeting black girls is used in misogynoir, otherwise known as the intersexuality of racism and misogyny. Suspensions break children. Prison breaks our minds until the society had turned its back on us. That is unfair, unjust, and painful to know. If a white student did something against school policy, they would get a slap on the wrist and go on their day. Being a student of color should not increase our risk of being targeted and losing on our education. Instead of suspending students and making them lose out on school time, we should be able to put more programs so that students are not disproportionately marginalized and get the true meaning to succeed. This includes funding guidance centers, social workers, and the arts, and so many more to show students that they aren't walking to become a base for statistics. Reallocating refunds that help students rather than punish them is a way to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was powerful. Great stuff. Thank you for your perspective. And also, I want everybody to look in the chat. The chat is fantastic feedback from everybody, so I thank you for that. Next, JoJo Perrell from the New York Civil Liberties Union. We thank them. For the past several years, they really organized a great number of people to come and testify and give terrific testimony.
Hi, my name is JoJo Perrell. I'm a youth organizer from the NYCLU, and today I will also be speaking about comprehensive sex education. So I grew up in a private school in Manhattan, and I have the privilege of receiving comprehensive sex education. We began taking health classes starting in eighth grade through the tenth grade. We receive information on nutrition, mental health, drugs and alcohol, and sex education. We learn about taking care of our bodies with food and exercise, identifying our mental health, reaching out for help, and the effects of drugs and alcohol. When we reached the lesson plan of sex ed, we learned about consent, contraceptives, birth control, our rights with a doctor, anatomy, sexual health online, STDs, and services we could access without our parents knowing. We also had a box to anonymously ask additional questions we had. Our health education included only facts and not the opinion of our teacher or parents on topics. No one was allowed to switch out of this class, even if their parents were uncomfortable, because this is important information for us, and we deserve accurate and informative information to make decisions on our health and well-being. When I joined the Teen Activism Project, I heard stories from my peers about not receiving accurate and comprehensive sex education and receiving wrong or biased information. I was appalled. Living in such a progressive city, I would think it would be just as much of a priority to teach teens about their body as teaching core classes such as math and English. For example, in two thousand nineteen, the Teen Activism Project conducted a grassroots survey to better understand the experiences of NYC students with sex education. We found that of four hundred respondents, three quarters of them had not or didn't know if they had taken a health class focused on sex education at their schools. A hundred and forty-nine of those students said that there is no sex education in their schools. We also found that students did take classes on sex education. They were primarily focused on contraceptives, STDs, and consent, and did not focus on LGBTQ plus issues, confidentiality, abuse, which are vital pieces of comprehensive sex education. Students need comprehensive, medically accurate, age-appropriate, and inclusive sex education in their schools that are free from bias. Our education system should be preparing teens with accurate information they need if they choose to make certain decisions. Teens deserve facts about their bodies, not opinions. Sex education is education. It's not just about sex. It's learning about how to be safe, learning about the body, and teaching children consent at a young age, and much more. I'm calling on the Department of Education to implement a required comprehensive sex education program for all schools with a curriculum that only includes factual information about STDs, intercourse, sexual identity, consent, contraceptives, birth control, anatomy, services for young people, mental health, and keeping your body healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Eduardo, do we have any other speakers to testify?
At this point, we welcome anybody else that would like to testify. You could certainly acknowledge that in the chat box. While we wait, I want to thank you, Kenny. I know you're doing some amazing work with the New York Civil Liberties Union. Can you just tell us a bit, how you recruit your students and make them such great ambassadors? Well, yeah, there you go.
Poor thing. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us, and, you know, big round of applause for the students who spoke and testified. Yeah, we do recruitment, you know, all throughout the summer. Of course, this year was a little bit differently with the pandemic. So I reached out to, you know, schools, principals, guidance counselors, and this year I did some virtual info sessions about the program, and the students who, you know, you saw testifying today have all been in the program for at least two years. And so normally, during the program, they learn about the issues, and then they kind of move up into different leadership roles and, you know, learn a lot about the issues, are passionate about them, and want to have their voices heard, you know, while you heard from all of them today. So we appreciate your invitation to testify, and again, great job to all the students and all the young people here.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kenny. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you so much. So we're scheduled to go till five, right, Eduardo?
Yes, that is correct, Andrew.
We're going to leave this open for those of you who want to stay on in case someone else comes to testify. We thank all of you. We in particular thank Councilmember Rose. She stayed on the whole time and listened to every bit of testimony.
Yes.
If you have any reaction, if you want to give any reactions, feel free.
Councilmember, the unmute.
We gotta unmute, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta mute you, councilmember. Sorry, you're being muted right now, Councilmember Rose. Yes. Unfortunately, we can't hear you, councilmember. The unmute, the mute button is on for you. Oh, there we go, yes.
Okay, okay. All right. I just wanted to thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you, all of you. My colleagues in government who are working through these unusual times with this technology that we still, some of us still haven't mastered, but yet, you know, we're doing our best to deliver the services. And I want to thank all of the participants that are, or that spoke today. Your stories are compelling. It's important that we hear them. It's important that you know that we heard them and that we're going to do all that we can to address the needs, many, many of which weren't being addressed previous to COVID. And we now have additional challenges. But I want you to know that our young people are still going to be the priority. We're not going to allow young people in New York City to be collateral damage for anything, and that we're going to continue to, to work through our challenges. And I want to thank you for your energy and your commitment. The ICC members, you are, you know, you're really phenomenal. And I just appreciate the work that you're all doing, DYCD, the ICC, and all of our youth service providers who are stepping up, facing the challenges that we have, and we're all going to get to the other side if we work together. So again, thank you all, and know that you were heard.
Thank you, Catherine, again. And you did a great job summarizing a lot of the things that we heard today.
Oh, thank you.
So many areas like sex education, LGBTQ services, mental health needs, school suspensions, you know, all those things, community and police relations, all very important topics. And so, Eduardo, I think we'll keep this open till five. If everyone wants to leave, they may feel free to. In the meantime, I want to wish all of you a happy holidays. Please be safe, be well, wear a mask. Together, we're going to get through this. I'm glad to see there's a vaccine right around the corner, but we still must keep ourselves safe. And I know I can speak for Chair Rose. We're both Staten Islanders, and we're really concerned about what we're seeing on Staten Island. That we're going to run out of hospital beds, and that's going to happen across the city. So please be responsible and wear a mask and maintain social distancing.
Yes.
Thanks all.
Thank you, everyone. We will stay on. Of course, those of you who have the commitments, we understand it. We will welcome anybody who wants to join us after everyone has left. We will still be recording testimony. We're going to post this on DYCD's webpage, and we will extract those portions that are being directed at particular agencies, and we will share that with you for your appreciation. Thank you, one and all. Happy holidays, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.